Meeting order at 7:10 and express my apologies for being 10 minutes late. Closed session seems to go a bit longer these days. I'll call, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance please? Please join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and for the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Esperanza Villegas with us for Spanish translation.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Esperanza Villegas y esta noche estoy aquí para traducir. Si alguno de ustedes tiene preguntas, me encuentra la parte trasera de esta sala. Gracias.
Thank you very much. We have headsets for the hearing impaired. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Dr. Sarves.
We do have one presentation tonight. We're very pleased to have La Cumbre Junior High Principal Joanne Caines. She's with us to provide information on the GEAR Up grant and PK Parent Education Program.
Good evening. Always a pleasure to share amazing programs with you. About a year and a half ago, Dr. Cynthia White said to me, "Hey, why don't you check out GEAR Up? I think it's worthwhile." I can't thank her enough because we applied and the board approved the GEAR Up grant, which was a very modest $7,500 grant for staff development, mostly to attend their conferences and forums. Little did we know the programs that were connected with GEAR Up. Just to refresh everybody's memory, GEAR Up, which is gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs, is a federal grant passed through the states to support middle school reform. It is for middle schools and junior high schools. La Cumbre is the first school within 100 miles to be a GEAR Up school. So again, most of the money is designed for professional development, but there are two programs that I want to share with you. The first is the GEAR Up Trust Awards. This is for GEAR Up schools to provide financial assistance for higher education for students in the school. And so this year, I want you to know that La Cumbre Junior High will be awarding three education trust grants, college scholarships of $2,000 each to three students this year, and again, three students next year. We're hoping that our GEAR Up grant will go five years, and so it would be three a year. So within the two years, the normal two years, we will be awarding $12,000 in college scholarships. So we're really excited about that. The program I want to focus on tonight is a program called PK, which stands for Parent Institute for Quality Education. This is a program that is offered to GEAR Up schools and one that La Cumbre jumped all over, literally. PK's mission is to connect family, schools, and community as partners. And the vision is really to create a community in which parents and educators collaborate to transform a child's educational environment, both at home and at school. Unlike most programs that are for students, this is a program for parents. This is a parent education program because we realize that all parents love their children and want a better future for them. And the second one, of course, which is the board's mission, every child can learn and deserves the option of a college education. So just wanting to highlight a few of PK's accomplishments because it's an amazing program that has affected more than 1.5 million students since its inception. One of the beauties of the PK program has been a partnership with the Cal State Universities. And it has worked with PK to prepare low-income students for success at its campuses. The one data statistic I want to point out especially is that more than 90% of the children of PK-educated parents graduated high school, whereas the average Latino rate is 50%, and more than half of them go on to college. So this has a huge success rate. It is a program that really works with parents to teach them how to provide a positive educational environment for children, both at home and at school. It's a free program, and it lasts nine weeks, once a week. We did have to do a match and show what this would be worth if we had to pay for it, and the program was worth $43,500 that was provided to us because we are a GEAR Up school. And the beauty is creating a bridge between the home and the school that's really emphasized, and parents are taught all about how to work in the educational system and how to have the tools to have their children be successful in school. It was interesting that every Wednesday, I used to announce on the intercom to all of the students to remind their parents to come to the program because the parents were actually earning the rewards for the children, as opposed to children earning for themselves. You can see that since 1987, when the program started, more than half a million parents have graduated from PK programs. Okay, so La Cumbre's program ran nine weeks from January 27th to April 7th. We had nine facilitators. They were all homegrown. They were all facilitators that we knew and trusted. They included teachers, parents, support staff, Cal Soap tutor, and community partners. We had seven groups in Spanish and two groups in English. And we graduated 276 parents. An amazing number, something that this city has probably never quite seen. Again, it wasn't a one-evening program, it was nine weeks long. We had representation from all of our elementary feeder schools because we opened the program to our sixth-grade parents, as well as our ninth-grade parents. So it really was a six-through-nine program. We provided free childcare, and we had 150 to 200 children weekly. For the little ones, we did stories and activities. For the older ones, we provided some avid strategies and avid events. We also had Cal Soap tutors that volunteered to come and talk to students about the importance of college. We also provided, for the 276 parents, coffee, cocoa, and because we had no budget for this, we baked 1,000 cookies every week, homemade cookies from scratch, as a reward for those who came.
That's also that cookie metric there for success, right?
Well, I'll tell you, if you want people to come, we went through 100 pot coffee, 100 cups of coffee in less than 20 minutes a night. It was pretty amazing. It was a hungry group. But the topics covered included, you know, how to prepare for high school while you're in junior high, how to calculate your GPA, the A-through-G requirements, the emotional needs of youth, peer pressure, motivating teens to read, all about these acronyms that we hear about, the CELT, the SARC, the STAR, the SAT, the Casey, and how to meet admission requirements for higher education, including understanding the systems, the community college system, the CSU system, and the UC system, how to read a transcript, and how to advocate for your child. But the amazing part of this was that all of the 276 parents received this certificate from the 23 Cal State University Consortium guaranteeing admission to a Cal State University for all of their children, as long as they're eligible in 12th grade. Now, 276 parents, about three children per family, we impacted probably about 800 children having guaranteed admission to a Cal State University. Again, creating a college-going culture and creating a generation of college-going youth. This is what it looked like, and it was absolutely amazing. It was packed, and downstairs at La Cumbre, seats 900, so that gives you an idea of how many people came. And the children came, and they cheered for their parents as they graduated. It was pretty amazing. But that's from my perspective as the administrator. Again, a huge thank you to Dr. Cynthia White, who always has great ideas and does her research. But I want to give you a chance to hear from a parent who went through the program, a parent that we know well because she's an employee of the Santa Barbara School District. Loretta S. Hensley.
Thank you very much. As she said, you know, "I'm an employee here and I'm also a La Cumbre parent. I'm sorry, I'm a bit nervous because I don't usually do this." I'm very pleased and very grateful to have been, you know, given the opportunity to participate in this PK program. And I wrote this out because I knew I would be, you know, kind of shaking. It's given us, parents, the tools to do a better job in guiding our children through, you know, their secondary school years, like for example, Mrs. Caines already went through the whole list, the A-through-G requirements, the testing deadlines for college admissions, understanding how, as involved parents, we need to guide our students, you know, starting as early as elementary, not just, you know, middle school, but elementary school. And of course, the golden ticket, you know, the college admissions certificate, which is the added bonus, placing our students or our children a step ahead of others. So again, on behalf of all the parents, I want to thank you, the board, for allowing Mrs. Caines to bring this program to us and enable us and motivate us in continuing to guide our children, as they are our future. And ultimately, thank you very much, Mrs. Caines, for pushing this through. Thanks.
Now, when Mike Alvarez became an administrative intern at La Cumbre, come on up, Mike, he thought he was just going to be an administrative intern, wrong. He was one of the PK facilitators, and he had the responsibility of teaching and facilitating 30-plus adults, a job lot harder than teaching children. So Mike, how was that?
No, I was coming up here. It was a really special experience because I think one of the best part about it was the parents sharing with each other. Some of the parents said, "Oh, I had some difficulty with my children, my teenager. I felt like I was doing something wrong as a parent." And then they realized, "I'm not alone. Other parents have the same kind of difficulties. They have the same kind of questions." And they felt like normal parents. And then they turned to helping each other. And when they came to class, they brought back ideas, solutions, they checked out a scholarship book from the library, brought that in, shared that with each other. So it was a great opportunity for them to share, learn, and help each other out, and not feel alone. It was really great.
By the way, I just want to point out the fact that of the 276 parents, they represented all segments of our school community. There were special ed parents, there were college prep parents, there were honors parents, there were grandparents. And many times, families came together, parent families, so it was great. Finally, I want to introduce to you the woman, excuse me, who every week drove from Santa Maria to La Cumbre Junior High and home again because she was our PK region rep. And she did just an amazing job running between all of the nine groups. And I want to introduce her to you and give her a chance to say a few words. Her name is Alma Grimaldo.
Wow, that's an amazing PowerPoint Joanne brought up to you guys. I can't really define in any other way how PK is, just the way she outlined it was perfect. My name again is Alma Grimaldo. I am the Associate Director for the Santa Maria area for the PK program. I'm working with the Bakersfield office, and that's through where we're offering the program to Santa Barbara. We really are trying to cater other areas out of Santa Maria, and we're trying to expand. Our goal is to have an office that's going to cater the regions from Oxnard all the way to Paso Robles, just from Santa Maria. So we're already thinking of expanding. The opportunity that we had working with Santa Barbara was just amazing. I have to say that we've broken a record working with these groups of parents here in Santa Barbara. 276 parents, if you think about it, that's very, very large. And so, like I said, it's really record-breaking, and it's amazing to see how many parents have become involved in their children's education. That's something that we have to push, and I think that's something very important, to start thinking about how important it is and how much we need to push for higher education. I just have to thank Joanne for inviting PK to the school, as well as Mrs. White. It's just, it's super important to expand and to, you know, diversify our program. We really work with different communities. We want to, we are very diverse. We work in 16 different languages, 38 of the 58 counties in California. We work in different states, so we're a very diverse and big organization. I do want to point out that the certificate, and I just want to reiterate this, and I know Joanne mentioned that it's, you know, it's guaranteed admission, I just, I do want to underline because we don't want to go in with the wrong impression when we're giving these certificates out. It's a conditional guaranteed admission as long as all the requirements are met. This certificate will give them an extra point, we want to say it's an extra push, to seem more competitive and to have higher, you know, higher boost when applying. You'll look better. You'll make, the students will look better, you know, comparing to the other group of students that are coming in presenting the certificate. I do want to mention, and this was the last school year that we were going to offer this certificate, but we're going to extend, and this is something I hadn't mentioned to Mrs. Caines, but we are extending this certificate for one more year. So we'll still offer this for the next school year, and that's something really amazing. And whatever schools that we work with here in Santa Barbara as well, will be able to qualify for the certificate. And it's something that gives a really push for parents to participate. And so I just want to thank Joanne and all the staff that really helped, all the parents that became involved in the program. It's amazing to see that even, you know, staff members are willing to facilitate these classes that are not easy to do. If you're working with group of peers, I'm sure you all know it's difficult. It's difficult, and especially with parents that I'm sure have already been college graduates themselves, the type of education or the type of information that you can teach is different. So that's a whole different barrier that you have to cross. So I do take my hats off to everybody who facilitated, and I just want to say thanks, thank you again. Thanks to Santa Barbara for opening the doors for the PK program, and we're here to work whenever you guys are, you know, bring us back again. So thank you again, and thank you, Joanne, for all the work. I just have to say that this lady here did an amazing job, and, you know, everybody has a long day of work, but she was there every night supporting the parents at La Cumbre, you know, offering the beverages, which not everybody does. In reality, not all principals do this. So this is something that she did out of her, you know, she went out of her way to do this. And I think that's another reason why we had such a high retention at La Cumbre. She did a lot of promoting the program, and I, and that's, you know, we usually say it's 70% retention what we get. That wasn't the case at La Cumbre. 276 to start off, and we kept it all the way through. We had about a 90% retention at La Cumbre Junior High, which is amazing. So thank you again, and thank you for having me. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Alma. So there, you know already that we're going to be offering this program again next year. And I do invite board members and district staff to come and take a peek at what's going on. It's an amazing program. And now, when I talk to students, I say, "Your mother came for nine weeks to guarantee your admission to college. You need to do your part." So thanks for letting us share.
Thank you, Mrs. Caines.
Mr. Herron? Mr. Herron? Mr. Herron?
Oh, Mrs. Parker.
Over here is what it sounds coming from. I just have to share that I am a proud graduate of the PK program, and I want to commend you too, Mrs. Caines. And I have to say that I did bring my son one night, and he just about fell over when he realized that on Wednesday nights, the school, it was as if school were in session. It was that busy on the campus. It was amazing to see, so it was a great program. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sarves, superintendent's report.
Good. Well, board, we have a lot of items on tonight's agenda, so I'll be brief. But I do want to comment on just a couple of things. As winners in the Western Regional level, the Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy Robotics Team will be competing in Atlanta this weekend in the FIRST Robotic Championship, FIRST F-I-R-S-T, stands for something. I don't remember, but it's not the first one. More than 10,000 young people and 500 robots will be in this competition in the six fields. And the DP Engineers, short for DP Engineering, take our best wishes with them. Next, Santa Barbara Museum of Art and La Cuesta Continuation High School began a collaboration three years ago that's been a great collaboration and provides opportunities for La Cuesta students to explore forms of self-expression. The current exhibit, the Delacroix to Monet Masterpieces of the 19th Century painting from the Walters Art Museum, which is just an amazing display at the Museum of Art, was a launching point for the stencil project that you see on display on the back wall, on the side wall board at the back of the room. It reflects student observations of concepts such as point of view and expression. The students took photos of each other, then cut stencils for their own photographic portraits, painted their image, along with one-word messages, as you'll see on these pictures. These present-day portraits were inspired by the 19th century artists who broke ground by depicting real people in their paintings at a time when mythological or religious icons had previously been the norm. So it's been quite a partnership. The Board Brief. My office regularly issues a report to the board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of articles and reports of information on school and district matters. A copy of the March 26th Board Brief is on display in the reception area. The final language of the Secondary District Honors Coursework Plan is of course available on our website, but can also be found in our most recent Board Brief. Earth Day 2010, the 40th anniversary of the campaign, takes place on April 22nd. Locally, there will be an Earth Day festival this weekend. Our Nutrition Services Department, in partnership with the Orphela Foundation, is serving up tasty nutritious school food in the new Mobile Cafe, so you don't want to miss this. Nutrition Services Director Nancy Weiss will be highlighting some delicious school recipes at noon each day in a live stage demonstration. She will be handing out May school lunch menus and catering menus as well. Upcoming events, you have a list of the events, and they're over on the side table if anyone in the audience would like to see. San Marcos High School presents the musical Grease, April 29 through 30 and May 5 through 8. Locklearina Junior High School's band concert featuring the Jazz Band, Drum Line Beginning Band, and Advanced Concert Band is on May 6. Santa Barbara Junior High will perform the musical Willy Wonka on May 6 through 8. La Cumbre Junior High School's musical Grease is May 6 through 8 as well. Santa Barbara High School's musical Singin' in the Rain will take place May 7 through 8 and 13 through 15, and they'll have a matinee on May 9. Please visit our website, it's posted here on the screen, for more information on school events. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sarves. I'd like to point out also that the Board Briefs can be found on the website.
I'm ASP Vice President this year, so we have a few things we just wanted to let you know are going on in our school right now. First up, we just finished our Penny's for Patients campaign, which is for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. And because of certain incentives that we provided, we had a choice of three different parties, a breakfast party, an ice cream party, and a pie in the face to your teacher. We made over $800, which is $300 more dollars than we made last year, so we're really happy about that.
Also, we just held our ASP elections, which determine the executive team for next year's ASP class, basically the students who run the student events in charge of the ASP class. And Katie Villanueva was elected our ASP president, and that's really exciting because she's been in the class for four years and is really looking forward to that. Valeria Garcia was elected ASP Vice President. She's also been in the class for, I think, two years, so. And then I was elected ASP Treasurer, which I'm really looking forward to because I feel excited about next year and the exec team. And then Griselda Carmona is our new ASP Secretary. And then our pep and rally is Jay Kirsch, so we're pretty excited about next year's team and getting going on events and various activities. Okay, and then this week, we're also holding class elections, which will determine a good majority of the students who will participate in the ASP class next year and be equally involved with events and stuff for next year, so.
Yeah, and then we also have, we're starting to advertise and we're starting to sell tickets for our prom this year. I don't know if you've heard, but we're really excited about the location. We're having our prom at the Sunken Gardens this year, and the theme is Through the Looking Glass. So we're doing an Alice in Wonderland theme. We're really excited about that, and it's going to be May 22nd from 8 to 11 p.m.
One of the activities that we have before prom for everyone who doesn't get to go to prom is MARP, spelled backwards, prom. And that's just really our inexpensive, fun, sort of crazy, off-the-wall techno dance that we hold in the hallways of our school. It's really cost-efficient and fun at the same time.
Yeah, so we're also doing a lot of fundraising right now for prom and for senior activities because obviously we have a budget that we need to meet. So we recently collaborated with Saks Fifth Avenue, and they helped us with Operation Prom Dress, or no, not Operation Prom Dress. They gave a percent, a discount to students looking to buy their prom dresses, and they also helped us put together a raffle basket that we're currently raffling off that has a lot of really great goodies in it. Dinner for four at the Canary Hotel, they've got boutonnieres, corsages, the whole prom deal is in one basket, so we've been selling tickets for that, and we're really excited about it. We also have, next week, we're doing Earth Week, which is in celebration of Earth Day. And ASP is collaborating with the Santa Barbara High School Green Club, and each day, we're doing a different activity and event to maintain environmental efficiency. So the first day is Carpool and Bike to School Day, and it's going to be really cool because we're going to be doing a raffle. we're going to be doing a raffle for everyone who carpools. And then, we're also going to be having bike mechanics on the front lawn during lunch that can help you fix up your bike or tune it up. And we're also going to be having our, Santa Barbara High School Dawn Riders are going to be having a bike show during lunch, which we're really excited about. And then, Tuesday, we're collaborating with some local farmers from the farmer's market for an Eat Local Day. And we're gonna be giving out, I think, lemonade is something that we're going to be doing. And we're also just going to be trying to get more students to go to the farmer's market. And then, on Wednesday, we're collaborating with the San Marcos Green Club to help them with an art project that they're trying to do to represent, I believe it's the number of plastic bottles used in the US during one hour or something like that. So, we're collecting plastic bottles that they're going to then put into an art exhibit. So, that's happening on Wednesday. Thursday, we're doing e-waste with the Dawn's Net Cafe, which we're going to be collecting old cell phones, old electronics, that they're going to efficiently recycle. And then, on Friday, as a lead-up to MARP, because that is our recycled dance, as we like to call it, we're going to be having our front lawn fiasco, which is something that we've been doing for about a year now, which is with the four days we have to sell food on campus, we have front lawn fiascos. So, we bring in different types of food. We have Wahoo's Fish Tacos. We're going to bring in The Habit and possibly Pizza and have a mini festival on the front lawn where students can stay on campus, buy food, listen to music, and just have a good time. So, we're looking forward to that. And I think that's it. Oh, I also wanted to point out, we had WASC come to our school recently, and the ASB, we were honored to have a really good
Conversation.
Conversation with the WASC members, and they really thought that we were doing a good job with how we were handling things and how we are on top of our game. So, we got a good report from WASC for ASB. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. C-two, Board Comments and Correspondence. Anybody have anything to add?
I just, I went to Peabody School and watched the Disability Awareness Day, and there were about eight or nine different stations with representatives talking about different aspects of disabilities. And I just want to thank the SEAC parents because they gathered, they were at several of the stations talking about disabilities. To see all these children reacting to the different tables and participating, and I'll have to say, the biggest involvement and enthusiasm was trying to go from a wheelchair to the toilet. And everybody wanted to try it because it proved to be so difficult. It was, it was a very eye-opening experience, and they were very enthusiastic.
Mrs. Cudero?
I do have one comment. Just, I attended the dedication of the mural that the Franklin School students created at the newly remodeled McDonald's on Milpa Street. And I have to say, the, well, if you haven't seen the mural, it's absolutely stunning. It's beautiful. But the students also had a small group of their Franklin School rock band there and were playing music while we were engaged in the ribbon-cutting, et cetera. And they were absolutely wonderful. So, it was, it was a wonderful event, and our students were, I think, duly honored.
We heard it was just great. The community loved it.
Mrs. Deacon?
I just want to mention one thing. For those of us who aren't going to Atlanta to watch the robotic competition, it's going to be live online. And I'll send Barbara Kiani the link so that if you are feeling so inclined, you can pull it up and watch our penguin ears compete.
Thank you. Okay. C-five, Acceptance of Donations.
Move to Accept with Appreciation?
I'll second that, but may I ask why we jumped to C-five?
What did I miss?
Oh, C-four.
Oh, I forgot.
C-three and C-four.
I forgot. Okay, I'm just anxious to keep moving. Okay, let's go to C-two. No, we did that. C-three, Announcement of Closed Sessions. Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Closed session on B-one, we'll talk about that later under E-nine. On B-two, Conference with Labor Negotiator, we'll talk with, about that on E-two. B-three, the KC waivers. There was a motion by Parker, seconded by Cudero, to approve the KC waivers, and it passed four to zero with one absent member. And B-four, nothing to report. So, now, we'll go to C-four. Public comments.
We do have one request to speak from the public, Lauren Mason.
Good evening. About three weeks ago, I called Robyn Sawaski's office and spoke with her assistant to get an appointment to speak with someone concerning what I'm about to present tonight. It's very hard to have a one-way, three-minute conversation about district policies and procedures at a board meeting, but since I never received a call back, I will do my best. At parent-teacher nights every year, parents are told that they can follow their children's work online. This is true when teachers follow through in a timely manner. Some teachers are excellent at doing this, others do it sometime, and then there are some that don't do it at all. Teachers in this district have access to four different programs that I know of, ARI, Edline, Teachers' Web, and another one that I don't know the name of, but it requires the student's ID to access it. The district should mandate the use of only one program district-wide. They should train and hold accountable their teachers on the use of this program. If students have to meet deadlines, why shouldn't teachers be held accountable to grade all assignments and post that grade online within a one-week period? Students need feedback on previous assignments in order to go forward on future assignments and not make the same mistake. If the ARI or Edline programs are used properly, parents and students have access to grades, future assignments, and attendance. If parents would start to use this, then the district would be able to send out report cards only at the end of every semester and not eight report cards every school currently mails out, allowing for a savings of twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars in postage alone, as I suggested to you about a month ago at your March ninth meeting. The midsemester and progress report cards are not needed. They are available online. I can access both of my children's complete report cards from La Colina and Dos Pueblos on the ARI site. Report cards are not signed and returned by parents. If a student is at risk, then teachers should send home a progress report that must be acknowledged and signed by a parent. I hope that the district will implement a policy mandating the use of only one software by its teachers and follow through to make sure that they are in fact using it properly and in a timely manner. I would also hope that the district would return phone calls even if the response is no one will meet or talk with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
We will follow up on that.
C-five now, Acceptance of Donations.
I will again move to accept with appreciation.
And I will second that.
Okay. Under discussion, I'll point out that you'll notice a little difference in format. They're not all listed on the agenda. There is an attachment that has them all.
A five-page attachment.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, four to zero with one absent. Okay. D, Consent Agenda. Anybody have any to pull? Mrs. Deacon?
I don't want to pull any, and if no one else is going to pull the library one, while the librarians are here, I would just like to thank them for coming and for the work that they
I am going to pull that one
Oh.
And ask your indulgents to let us speak on it immediately.
That's fine with me.
Any other?
But I will move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda items. And I will second that. That was the one that I was just going to, I wasn't going to pull it either, but I was going to highlight, so.
I was, I was going to pull it.
And I wanted to know, board members saw the revision on D-five, which is the approval of intent to apply for the I-three grant to improve algebra proficiency. We could not apply for the amount that we originally thought we could.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried, four to zero with one absent. We will now talk about D-seven, Approval of the Santa Barbara Elementary District and Secondary District Library Master Plans. Mrs. Sawaski?
I suppose, you know that from the description that we have these plans that are approved every year, and the librarians take, meet together, they take time looking at those. Dr. Cynthia White actually helped facilitate this again this year. And I guess that, you know, if you have questions about them, I don't want to go through each one of the plans, but the librarians come every year so that if there are questions or if you would like any kind of explanation or further description, they're here available.
As with many things, this is something our librarians are very serious and about and dedicated to.
I would like to hear from any of them who might have comments on this or thoughts on it or concerns or anything they'd like us to know personally.
They probably always have a concern about more money.
Well, I was going to point that out if nobody else did, yeah. I want to say, I appreciate the executive summary, showing what has been accomplished, what's going on. I like the format very much. I am concerned that we have seven elementary schools with absolutely no budget for a, for the elementary, any, seven elementary schools with no budget for the library. And the fact that evidently the principals get funds that are, used to be for libraries, but don't spend it on libraries, those things do concern me, and so I'll be asking about that.
That actually is part of the block grant that has the thirty percent reduction in Tier Three, and yeah, it's, it's been seriously affected by our state budget and those categorical funds.
But, yeah, it just said, it says in here that there is funding, but it not being used for libraries. Some funding that's been available, but no longer used for libraries.
At the site level, yes. When they, they, we used to automatically take off a certain percentage, it was a dollar amount, just for books, and we had it as a line item. That was just used for that. And then, last year, I believe it was, or maybe the year before, but certainly last year, we had to not have that in place because the budgets were cut so much at the schools. The site councils voted to have it spent for other things that, not that they don't want more books and to improve the libraries, but they had to use it for things that were, you know, in place that, I mean, it was, it's just one of those balancing things. And then, with the reductions to the thirty percent reduction and the reduction at the state first, you can imagine those numbers have just gone seriously downhill.
Mrs. Parker?
My main question was about that as well, in the sense that since it's part of the Tier Three categorical spending, funding, it became a choice whether or not to use it for the library. Is it fully a site council choice on whether or not to use it to the library, or could there be district directive?
The first issue with regard to the thirty percent, that's already been institutionalized. And I think what Robyn's alluding to is, remember, even before we took the thirty percent, there was a nineteen percent deficit on the dollar. Yeah, nineteen percent on every dollar. So, if you're asking about the residual amount, since it's now technically unrestricted under Tier Three, sure, the district could direct how those funds should be spent. But I'm just kind of laying out the equation for you.
Yeah, it's a, it's a small amount of money at this point.
Absolutely.
But I, I feel like, I mean, we always see these things in little pieces, and I would hate to say, "Oh, sites, we expect you to spend X amount," or, you know, whatever percentage of whatever's left on your libraries, and, and not know what the knock-on effect of that would be. But for there to be no spending on the libraries at a number of our elementary schools, it's, it's a problem.
And the flipside of that is that during the last three years, we have not made any reductions to unrestricted allocations to sites. Just so you know that. So, technically, the amount of unrestricted dollars that came from the unrestricted general fund as adjusted for enrollment is the same today as it was three years ago. We've never went there. I, I just think, you know, to have, you know, grasp of that entire knowledge of everything.
Mrs. Deacon?
And while we're on this piece, I guess it, for me, it raises the question, why are some schools able to make it work so that they are, can spend some of that money on their libraries where the others don't? And I know different schools have different needs, but maybe the schools that are, are actually spending library money have managed to do something else more efficiently that they could share with the other schools. So, I, because I think we'd all like to see some money spent on the libraries.
I, I think there's a variety of factors. I mean, Meg and I were just having this conversation about Washington. I mean, if you look at the amount of money that goes there relative to the other elementaries because they have no categoricals, there's some inherent inequities. And so, we haven't figured out how to address those globally, but they exist.
Let me, let me just say, we'll have that discussion with our elementary and secondary administrators. Libraries cannot survive on nothing.
Mrs. Parker?
In terms of the libraries, I mean, the funding, the outside funding that our schools get are so different.
Yes.
Some of our schools have, you know, art grants worth over a hundred thousand dollars. Washington, for example, gets two hundred thousand dollars from the parents. And there's just huge inequities in that way, and so I don't know how to balance that.
We, either do we.
But I, I do think that we maybe need to have a larger discussion about where libraries fit into this.
Mrs. Parker, you mentioned that site councils making the decision, but in reading this, it sounds like the principals are making the decisions. Is there a difference?
You mean, yes. The site councils, the, the school improvement funds, the old SIP, AB eight twenty-five, those are the funds that are typically used for libraries because, for books. That was part of the library block grant. And the principal's just one member of the site council, and they're the teams that report to site council, give direction, help with the budget.
But, but this report and the report indicates that the principal's making the decision. I just want to make sure we're talking about
Oh, that's not, that's not actually correct.
But that's in the report, so.
Okay. We'll, we'll correct that because it is a site council decision.
Since we have some of the secondary librarians here too, I, one of my questions was about the after-school hours, and I'm not sure what our after-school hours are for the high schools and junior highs. In the report, it mentions that the libraries are open after school. Could you tell us?
I'm open until four.
Until four.
Do I have to put there?
I'm Helen Murdock. I'm the librarian at San Marcos, and we're open till four every day.
And I'm Marcia Barr from Santa Barbara High, and we're open till four as well.
May I ask, if you're open to four, are you two there till four, or is it with your library techs?
I am.
Or does it depend on you are?
Yes.
And it's your library tech at, I don't know if you just have one library tech?
We have one library tech.
Okay.
Marcia has caught in the back.
I'm just, I love the school. I'm there early and stay late. I came into this late in life and I just enjoy it so much.
I did visit Greta Valley Union Library and, and watched the children come in, and half the, half the class did research by books and half did it on the internet, and then they switched. It was exciting to watch. Mrs. Cudero?
I think, I had a question about the funding too, but I think that's been covered. So, I just wanted to say thank you very much. I really appreciated the readability of this plan. I felt like it was clear. You know, we get so many reports that sometimes are really difficult to wade through, and this one, I felt, was very, very readable. So, thank you very much. It's a tribute to your professionalism, I'm sure, and we can always count on librarians for, you know.
Leading the way.
For leading the way, yes. So, thank you very much.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the Santa Barbara Elementary District and Secondary District Library Master Plans.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, four-zero with one absent. Thank you very much for spending the night with us, and I'm glad we could get you out of here at a decent time so you can get back to your libraries. of here at a decent time so you can get back to your libraries. Okay. We are on the action items. E one, completion and dissolution of Measure V two thousand Secondary District Bond Oversight Committee.
Dave Hetjung cannot be here tonight. When the voters in this community approved Measure V in the year two thousand, it was a general obligation bond. It provided considerable money for facilities at the secondary level, and it affected every junior high and every high school in the district. We had additional classrooms that were added. We had just major infrastructure upgrades at most of the schools. There, for two reasons, we didn't really get through the list of everything. One was that between two thousand and when we started construction, there was a major change in the bidding climate, mostly steel was being bought by China, construction prices were escalating considerably. And the other reason was that we knew that we were going to undertake a number of ADA upgrades. Well, in that interim period, two other things happened. One was that DSA added additional ADA requirements. Another was that there was a lawsuit that hit our district along with a lot of other districts in California that had general obligation funds. And that lawsuit called for other major changes in ADA accessibility. Well, we're pleased to have spent that money on ADA accessibility, although it did mean that what was anticipated before we went to the vote in year two thousand was not all completed. Nevertheless, we accessed a considerable amount of state funds, well over $40 million in state matching funds. And we have with us tonight Larry Varanish, who really spearheaded the effort from a number of standpoints. Larry, I'd like you to come up to the podium, if you will. Larry has served as our, yes, that's right.
Dave assured me I wouldn't be alone.
Larry has, has seen this through. Now, at every one of our Measure V bond oversight meetings, we had representatives from the various junior highs, we had board representatives on that committee, and a number of you have served on that committee as well. And we are at that point where we have spent the money, there's not very much remaining, and that money is obligated. So Larry, this is really your swan song, although I know the school relies on you in a number of ways, even though you're supposedly retired.
Well, we've all done a little of that, or will, yeah. Yeah, I would go along with what Dr. Sarvis has presented, the charge from the board, one of the promises is a grassroots bond, starting out of PTAs, Nancy Harder, Roger Hemavitz, Alfonso Tomaso Falzone, myself, a couple of people, once the bond passed, were in the very primary parts of, if you will, even negotiating with and alongside the district for what types of percentages the architects would be, would be, would be charged. The short of that is that I think what the board had in mind, and it did in fact happen, you had an oversight committee that was a sampling of the sites and a sampling of the community. The people were very faithful about it over the course of almost 10 years, and it probably was 10 years. There were very few, if any, real bumps in the roads. We went through two or three superintendents, a number of financial officers. It's true. Plans, plans and change orders on plans. And I think you should be pleased that I'll, I'll validate, as, as having been the chair or vice chair a number of times, that, that I think we've done the, followed the charge. There are no more projects that are doable with the amount of money, which is relatively down to zero. I would footnote that by thanking the board for all, all the committee members on a chance to serve their, their community in a way that doesn't always involve sitting through, even though we followed very faithfully the conduct of the meetings, but it's a different type of environment. And I think it allowed us to draw upon a number of different types of community personalities. There are a number of items left on the table, and you have other meetings to discuss the needs of the district. But I think the template that was put in place from my recol, from my being in terms of an oversight committee and a large draft of public money and an interaction regularly with the board and the superintendent and the financial officers hopefully served the community well. And I was really proud to be part of it, and I thank you for the opportunity, for all the members, including the principals who were drawn in about a year after it started. So, thank you.
Larry, before you sit down, I'd like to draw the board's attention to the attached road to renovation. It's a summary of all of the projects done under Measure V. In addition to the $67 million that was allocated by the, the citizens of this community, by the voters of this community, we accessed a considerable number of, of state matching funds, and we were able to complete projects to a total of $115 million. That's a considerable amount. We got a lot done. The purpose of the Measure V Oversight Committee was to see that this money was spent in a way that was entirely consistent with the original language in, in the, in the initiative that was voted on by our community. The bond funds have been assigned to current projects, and monies remaining at this point are needed to fund the preparation of state reports and respond to audits in addition to management of the projects until the DSA closeout of those projects. So we're still managing some construction on those projects, and we'll do so until we close out the projects and get DSA sign-off. You will also see a copy of the last minutes. Now, this is a draft, I mean, it was the, the committee's final meeting, so they didn't have another meeting to approve their draft.
The final meeting.
But they, but they went over these. And, let's see, which, which board member was there at the meeting?
I was there.
That's right, Ed was there. Ed Heron was at the meeting. There were two other items that are included in these minutes. One was that the committee is recommending that the Board of Education consider polling the community regarding the feasibility of a new bond measure. This is a committee that shepherded this whole process of construction and reconstruction, and of course, they're concerned about our facilities in the long run and various needs that we still have. The other is that the committee is recommending that the Board of Education dismantle the committee as their work is done. So we are asking for your action tonight to do that.
Mrs. Deacon?
First of all, I would just like to thank Mr. Varanish for his long tenure with this committee, because I know he really put a lot of time, many, many years into this, and brought a incredible professionalism, a real sense of history that was very helpful for people who came and, and went on the board. I know I was on this, on, not the board, but the Oversight Committee, I was on it for a year, and I remember very well all the expertise he brought to it. So I just want to especially thank him for, for all the great work he did on this. And I, I think no one knows better than the work that still remains to be done than those people that were on the Measure V committee. And so I, I take very seriously their encouragement to pursue maybe an additional bond so that we can complete that important work and get other work done as well. So just thank you very much. And I would like to go ahead and, and make a motion that we, we approve the completion and dissolution of the Measure V two thousand Secondary District Bond Oversight Committee.
I would like to second that and add and extend our sincerest gratitude to the members who served.
And I'll third that in terms of the gratitude and thank you, because it was an amazing, I mean, you've done an amazing job the whole way through, but certainly there are many committee members that were there serving for a long, long time. And it was, it was terrific to, to know that there were so many people that cared so much about our students, so thank you.
And in addition, I'd like to make sure we thank Mr. Hetjung for getting us through it all and what seemed to be pretty easy, but I'm sure it wasn't. And then for Mrs. Kanyani for doing the, the brochure, Road to Renovation, which is very, very professional.
Yes, if I may, if I may, I'm glad you included them, particularly Barbara, and I would also throw into that mix, if I might, you have a very gifted manager in Carl Mayros, and our personal and professional relationship and his extension of that to all the committee members and his site should serve you well in whichever direction. So again, thank you all.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four to zero with one absent. Thank you very much. All right. E two, approval of two thousand ten Classified Employee Retirement Incentive.
Elaine Alvarado, our coordinator for classified personnel, will make this presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I jumped ahead. I followed suit. I'm very sorry. This presentation will be made by Eric Smith, our Deputy Superintendent for Business Services.
Thank you. As the board will recall, last year, we actually engaged in, in two certificated retirement incentives. The overall goal there being if we can get those who are inclined to retire, we might be able to save some teachers' jobs that are basically low in seniority. This year, we followed suit with CSEA in terms of talking to them about retirement incentive for classified employees with a little bit different twist. The twist here would be, since there is not a great salary differential between those classified employees who retire and those that we replace them with, we basically started talking to CSEA about potentially not replacing the positions altogether based on a systematic evaluation of who actually retired. So what we did is we negotiated a tentative agreement, which would result, you know, lump sum cash payout of $10,000 subject to statutory benefits for those who are eligible to retire under the current contract. And essentially, that's 55 years of age and greater and at least 10 years of service. So with the understanding that we will critically assess the number and types of positions that actually exit through retirement and see how many of those we can actually live without going forward. The way we would structure this, if the board approves it, is we'd open a window, probably 30 days in length, and ask them for a non-revocable letter of retirement, which would be effective about June, or July first. We would also assess whether anybody has planned to retire that meets these eligibility requirements, and that's something we will do once we actually open the window and actually see who actually submits. So at this point in time, we're asking for your approval so we can move forward. This would be funded under the residual amount we have left in the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act Budget Stabilization Fund. We think our worst-case scenario, if everybody opted in that's eligible, would be $320,000 in terms of the lump sum. We'll get nowhere near that because we never do. I would estimate about a third, so I would say about $100,000 payout on a one-time basis. We will have some ongoing cost relative to the provision of the benefits. But the idea is hopefully we would get five, maybe more, maybe up to 10. We'll see if we can live without all of those positions. If you look at the average, probably classified employee salary and benefits, probably about $50,000, you can do the math, and then we can go from there. So at this point, we're asking for your approval.
Board? Mrs. Parker?
So I will do the math out loud, which is you're anticipating on an ongoing basis saving somewhere between 250 and 500,000 a year.
Absolutely.
Okay, I move to-
Depending on who we get and who we can live without.
Okay.
On a position basis, not a personality basis.
I move to approve the 2010 Classified Employee Retirement Incentive.
Second.
Discussion?
Can I just ask one quick question?
Yes.
It seems a little counterintuitive, but I think I know the answer to this. For those people who've been working longer, they get less money, $500 per year for their benefits, but that's indefinitely as opposed to the other group that gets $1,000 but up to age sixty-five?
I think Elaine can speak to it, and actually, I think it depended on the language that was in the contract at that point in time.
This is all part of, that part is, is in the contract, current contract, in fact, both the certificated and classified contracts. And I don't have that date in front of me, but 1982, I believe, for those hired before that date are eligible for the $500, and it is a per-year lifetime towards their medical premiums.
That's what I thought. Do we need to say in, in this agreement that it's lifetime? I mean, it doesn't spell it out, and I know that the, the contract backs that up, but I'm just wondering if we need to say lifetime $500 benefit.
It's our, we could add that, but it's already contained in the contract, and they're already entitled to that, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four to zero with one absent. E three, approval of the Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistant Team to perform a management assistance study and evaluation of the district's child development program.
Deputy Superintendent Eric Smith will make this presentation as well.
On March ninth of this year, we presented the second interim financial report, and at that time, we apprised the board that the child development program has experienced significant fiscal difficulties. We believe that the fiscal difficulties are probably intertwined with other difficulties. And so at that point in time, I asked for direction from the board relative to having an outside evaluator come in and look at this program. I kind of did a cursory review of who does this, and not a lot of firms look at child development, but FICMAT does do child development. So I submitted an online request form, started talking to them about that, and working both with Robin and the two child development coordinators, among others, we defined scope points, which I believe are included in the, the study agreement. I was a little bit shocked with the number, but given what we're asking them to look at, which in my mind is a fairly expansive scope, I mean, basically everything under the sun, I can understand why that number is large. So in any event, I was scheduled to have a conference call with them today about when they could be on-site, should the board approve this. I still think we're looking probably at mid-May, but I don't have that confirmed. We think that basically all programmatic as well as fiscal aspects of the operation of the child development program really need to be put under a microscope. And we've asked them in the scope to look at not only fiscal and programmatic, look at organizational structure, alignment issues, staffing, regulatory, you name it, we're asking them to look at it. So I'm happy to answer any questions relative to what they proposed in their study agreement, although I haven't had this final conference call I'd like to have with them. But I mean, I'm sure if there's any nuances that need to be hashed out, that certainly could be done. Or if there's anything additional thing the board would like to add, I tried to think of everything under the sun. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
We have one public comment.
Lane Wheeler?
Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teachers Association, we'd like to thank Mr. Smith for taking the lead on this and for moving along, this process along as expediently as possible. Teachers in the child development program have suffered 15 reduction in force notices. They've never, ever been reduced in force before, and it is a severe blow to that program. We appreciate what the board's actions regarding the possible reduction of some of the management there, but we do need to have a complete snapshot of what this program looks like. From just a, a union standpoint, we've realized the complexities of the program because of its funding sources, because of its requirements for both legal adherence and regulation adherence, and they aren't exactly like those of the secondary and, and elementary. So we do believe that this is a, we hate to see the money spent, we do believe this is money well-spent. And we'd like to, once again, thank Mr. Smith for his lead on this and get this done as quickly as possible, so hopefully we'll be able to rescind some of those refs. Thank you.
Discussion? Mrs. Parker?
No, I'm just going to go ahead and move to approve the FICMAT study and evaluation for the district's child development program.
Second.
Further discussion? Mrs. Deacon?
I'm sorry, I just have one question. So the $18,500 is going to cost, is going to be deducted from their-
I was waiting for that question.
... payment, but at some point-
You're going to pay for it one way or the other. So the way I looked at it was this, is we have an agreement with the child development folks to pay us the 260-
is we have an agreement with the child development folks to pay us the $263,000 back over two years. Well, since the program's running at operating deficit, we can pile on another 18.5 and make it bigger, since it ultimately will come out of the unrestricted general fund, or we could just deduct it off and try and be, you know, nice about this. So that was my approach. I mean, I'm not married to it, I just thought it was kind of a novel approach, so.
And I guess the question that just was raised, would that money ever get repaid?
But, well, I mean, the question would be, is that, do you want to add the 18.5 to the 263 and have them pay that amount back over two years? Well, that was kind of our assessment.
Okay. Further discussion?
So the one thing that I, this is an editorial comment, the one thing that I think makes this study probably challenging for FICMAT, and I think hopefully will be one of the most useful things, is you'll look at the scope points, and you'll see we want a cost-center analysis. We want to see what sites make money, what sites lose money, and you know, I'm all about looking at things systematically, and if there's money losers, we might have to make some tough choices about those sites.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four, zero with one absent. E four, approval of reductions and layoffs due to lack of funds or lack of work.
And Eric Smith again. Are you going to defer to Elaine?
I'm going to defer to Elaine on this one.
Elaine Alvarado is our classified personnel coordinator.
Thank you, Dr. Sarves and board members. What you have before you is a list of the positions that we identified in our fiscal solvency plan on February 23rd. There are just a couple or one exception to it as far as the library technician. It was a reduction of hours. That was in discussion last year, and it was, it's a seven, currently a seven-hour position, and in line with the other library techs felt this was an appropriate time to bring forward that reduction to six hours. So that's straight across the district with the other positions that we have. That employee, it was anticipated, something that we were going to do last year, but withheld it and are bringing that forward. The other positions that we have discussed in the fiscal solvency plan, just so that you know, in the interim, we have been in discussion with CSEA. We've identified the employees, the positions, their employment rights, their displacement rights or bumping rights, those that do have bumping rights, and those who do not and who will receive a full layoff, as well as, as you can imagine, then others that are, the ones that are getting bumped, that may be out of a position too, and those have all been identified and discussed with CSEA. After this meeting and after the decision by the board, we will further meet with CSEA to discuss the impact of the layoff and the effects of the layoff, which is, again, a very typical process that we go through. One, what you're seeing here are the general funded and the MNO positions. We will bring forward, later date, the categorical positions. You may have noticed those are not on this list. There are going to be quite a number of them that we anticipate will be brought forward. So just a clarification, we have an April 29 deadline that we have per the ed code, but it's also a 45-day notice. So in discussions with CSEA, we are going to implement a 45-day notice before the start of school. So that does give us a little bit of window period, extra time period, either to go forward or to not go forward with some of the proposed categorical positions. But again, it's expected, and I anticipate to be back here presenting to you some of those categorical positions. If there's any questions you have on these, I'm certainly here to answer.
Mrs. Parker?
Two quick questions, one sort of a question comment. And the first is on that Franklin library tech. The district switched over to library techs in elementary before my time, I want to say about 2004, 2005, something like that.
Correct.
2005?
Correct.
And I know that at one time Franklin was a much, much larger school than any others, but even by then, it was coming into line in terms of enrollment with our other elementary schools, and now it is actually mid-range.
Right.
And yet, we've gone for years and years with them getting extra library services. And I'm, not that I'm ever happy to cut library services, but it certainly wasn't fair the way it was being played out before. And I, and I guess I'm asking, I won't ask the history of how that happened.
Okay.
I didn't, I'm not going to ask that, but I do want to say, as my comment, that I hope that if there are any other situations like this where there's unfair funding between the schools in terms of services provided to students.
Certainly. In fact, again, we, that was one that we looked at. We do look at enrollments. That does play into it. And unfortunately, it was just one that we started the discussion with last year, knowing that that was going to come in play, but when others came in play, came before that, that was not included. And again, that was an expectation, particularly when we were discussing school health assistance as well and those reductions, and we do align those, again, with staffing ratios with the enrollment. So it was, unfortunately, we just missed from our previous discussions and negotiations.
Okay. And my other quick question is on the school health assistant. Now, we voted to eliminate the health assistant at the academy with the intention of expanding the health assistant position at La Cumbra to take over, serving the academy as well. Are we going to see the La Cumbra addition, just on a regular personnel?
Correct. Yeah, we're going to discuss that actually as part of our negotiations and the impact and what that, what plays into that, and certainly looking at an increase of hours and how that's going to work. That still needs to be negotiated.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Do you have a motion?
I'll move to approve the, I guess, how do we say this?
Recommendations for layoffs.
The recommendations for layoffs due to lack of funds or lack of work.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four, zero, one absent. E five, approval of variable term waiver for adaptive PE teacher.
I'm going to ask Ann Peake to come up to the podium. Board, this is the first of a series of personnel actions that cannot be on the consent agenda. As you know, we have a lot, well, we could discuss each of the items on the agenda, but we put items on the consent agenda that are fairly perfunctory and that we expect very little comment about. So I don't think she really needs to comment on this, and I think it speaks for itself. We're asking for your action on this item.
Move to approve. Second.
Under discussion, I have a couple of questions. Are we extending this just for the rest of the school year, or is this for another year?
This will, oh, it's loud, sorry.
No, it needs to be loud.
This will go for one year. It's a 12-month permit. So it'll go April 1st to April 1st.
And what happened?
He will be done with his credential by next December.
And what happened to Mr. Wally Curtis, who's
He had some health issues.
Is he still on leave and?
No, he had to resign
Oh, he resigned?
Because of his health issues.
Did we look for anybody?
Yes, we did. And adaptive PE is one of the, what do they refer to those by the commission? A difficult-to-fill assignment. There are only two programs in the entire state, as I understand it.
Okay, so we did look for somebody who's credent
We did. We advertised it. No nibbles.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Sorry, that's who I am.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, four, zero, one not present. E six, approval of pre-internship permit in music.
Move to approve. Second.
No further discussion?
I asked my question earlier today.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four to zero with one absent. E seven, approval of additional report of annual teacher assignments and approval of board resolution 09/10-43.
Move to approve the additional report of annual teacher assignments and approval of board resolution 09/10-43.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four, zero with one absent.
Thank you.
You did a great job. I wish we would have had a bigger audience for you. Okay.
We're going to put her on the agenda
Yeah.
More often.
E eight, approval of Santa Barbara County Board, School Boards Association Revised Bylaws, E eight.
Board, the CSBA would like to know whether you are approving this or whether you're rejecting it, and they'll be asking for that.
And I'll chime in on this. I mean, we'll actually be approving it at our meeting on Thursday night, which I hope we're all going to.
Yes. I wanted to give you a chance to discuss it
Yeah.
in advance of that meeting.
Yeah. And so I can answer any questions about it if you happen to have any, since I am the, the board rep that goes to these meetings and
They do have meetings.
We do. We meet every month. We meet every month. The thing that I'm assigned to, we meet, and I actually drive to Buellton every month for this.
Well, I no longer have a committee assignment, so.
Oh, we could remedy that.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move to approve the Santa Barbara County School Board Association Revised Bylaws.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four, zero with one absent. E nine, approval of board action on student discipline cases numbers. There's four cases. Who would like to make the motions?
I'll go ahead. In case number 09/10-31, I move to approve the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel for one school year expulsion.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four, zero with one absent.
In case 09/10-34, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel for one school year expulsion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, four, zero with one absent.
In case 09/10-35, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel for one school year expulsion with a one semester suspended expulsion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, four, zero, one absent.
In case 09/10-36, move to uphold the findings and recommendations of the hearing panel for one calendar year expulsion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four, zero with one absent. Okay, F, conference agenda. F one, discussion of student discipline and graduation ceremonies and activities.
Michael Gonzalez, our director of student services and compliance, is here for the discussion. A board member requested that this be put on the agenda. Would you like comments from Mr. Gonzalez first?
Sure.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a board statement.
Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you. The board requested reexamination of the policy. The specific policy is Board Policy 5127 titled Graduation Ceremonies and Activities. The Associate Superintendent Robin Swawski and staff met with the secondary principals on March 16th to discuss the issue. I will share with you that it was a unanimous vote to recommend to the board that the existing policy that permits the exclusion of students for violations, for serious discipline violations, they wished, they recommended to the board that that process continue. I outlined in the cover memo how the schools are currently notifying parents and students of this requirement. I think I'll stop there and answer any specific questions you might have. Attached to the agenda, I did include copies of what the schools, the high schools are doing, and I summarized what the junior highs are doing.
Well, I think I was, I mean, I'm sure I was, the board member who asked you to, who asked to bring this back because of my concern that, my feeling that students have a different relationship with the graduation ceremony than they do with other senior activities such as a prom, the grad night at Disneyland, other activities, barbecues or picnics or things that go on, that the, that the graduation ceremony itself is much more of an academic, has much more of an academic relationship to the school and to the accomplishments that the student has achieved. And that I wanted us to really discuss whether denying students' participation in that activity is appropriate in all of the cases that were currently, that would currently fall under this policy, the existing policy. Because I feel like, for some, well, first of all, I was interested in noting that the, the dates seem different for the different high schools. So there's not a uniform policy there, but also that for some of the students, they could conceivably, I mean, I don't mean to use this euphemistically, I seriously mean, they could make a mistake, you know, contrary to how they would normally behave and it, early in the, in their final semester of, or even, well, it was unclear whether for some schools it would be the whole final year, the senior year, or the senior, or the second half of the senior year. And early on in the, in that period, however, lose the opportunity to graduate, to participate in the graduation ceremonies. I really feel like we need to provide more ways for students to earn back privileges once they have made a mistake in their behavior, rather than having this sort of finality of they, you know, they messed up, now they've lost that opportunity forever. I think I would like to see that in some of our other areas, but for purposes of this agenda, I'm only talking about this one. I'm not talking, I wouldn't, I don't have any disagreement with denying students' participation in the, the more, you know, sort of fun ancillary kind of activities. But the graduation ceremony itself, I think, is more serious and affects the families as well as the students. So that was my thinking.
I have a question. Maybe I'm just not reading correctly, but all of these are talking about a certain period of time when these are in effect, like suspended after February 18th. Well, what if we suspend somebody in January?
Well, to, to be more accurate, if you look at the Santa Barbara High statements, you will see that essentially it's effective the first day of their senior year through the end of the senior year up to the graduation ceremony. You are correct in interpreting what Dos Pueblos, what La Cuesta, and what San Marcos are doing. You can see that Dos Pueblos essentially says a suspension after February 18th. You can see La Cuesta says after May 1st. You can see San Marcos is April, after April 12th. But again, Santa Barbara High is very clear.
But what about, what about, we suspend people in, in December, January, February? I mean, are they included in this?
Again, the, the language is very specific, and for Santa Barbara High, if you were suspended for a serious violation any time during your senior year, it would exclude you.
How about the others?
Well, again, for example, at Dos Pueblos, a suspension after February 18th, not a suspension before February 18th.
I thought we're doing this because they've been suspended from school, and therefore they're not going to be involved. But somebody who gets suspended in January for the very same act can participate?
That is currently correct.
It just seems inconsistent to me.
We, when we met with the principals, we did point out that it was very likely when we surfaced to the board the varying dates that there would be a recommendation to come back and say, we've got to have a uniform policy. The existing board policy does not stipulate a date. I think Robin and I are both in agreement that there should be uniformity. But I also will share with you that we are of the belief that if we want to make graduation an earned and meaningful event, that we do believe principals should have the authority to exclude students from the graduation ceremony.
But this whole discussion came about because we were
We were suspending an expulsion.
We were suspending, and we didn't take into consideration what the policy at the school was. It was just arbitrary, no, they can't participate. But I don't know, it just seems
Well, remember, the existing board policy grants the principals the right to exclude students from the graduation ceremony.
Mrs. Parker?
I wish that
I wish that Dr. Capito were here so that we could ask why Santa Barbara High feels that it needs to be different. We do have Mrs. Keynes here as a principal who might be able to address, what is it about the second semester, right before graduation? Or maybe, and I don't know, you know, Mr. Gonzalez or Mrs. Keynes, if you can address why one school would feel the need for it to be an entire year?
The end result of the discussion was that the three high school principals agreed that everything needed to be uniform and consistent. So that inequity is being corrected. The high school principals felt that the key time was really the last nine weeks leading up to graduation, which probably corresponds with the February eighteenth. That is the time of year when seniors might tend to feel that they've already graduated. It's a time when it is the most difficult to keep seniors really focused on school, on academics, and on appropriate behavior. So, all three agreed that the last nine weeks, and they do educate students, two of the high schools said that, you know, the beginning of the second semester is when students actually sign, parents sign to this agreement. But it does go into effect the last nine weeks.
Can I ask Mr. Gonzalez then? Mr. Gonzalez, do you need us, can it simply be a district directive to the secondary schools that they adopt a consistent deadline, or do you need to have us write that into board policy?
No, at your request, we can direct.
Let me just say they're already moving toward that for next year. But I would like to put it not in board policy, I would like to put it in an AR so that we do have it in writing and we have their agreement to it.
Mrs. Deacon?
Sounds like we're all thinking along the same lines here. I guess it wasn't that hard to come to that common ground. Is it true that Dos Pueblos does not have a pledge that the students sign, that only San Marcos and Santa Barbara High students actually sign a pledge?
According to Mark Swanets, they do sign as well.
Okay, I just didn't see that form in here. Okay, so that's fine. And it would probably make sense to have that form be uniform as well. I'm surprised we actually haven't gotten into trouble about this before now, having these different dates. So, thank you.
As you're looking at the Board Policy fifty-one twenty-seven, there's reference to AB fourteen sixty-three proposed, that has passed, so maybe the word proposed could be taken out. Mrs. Cudero?
Well, I certainly think that it is more equitable if the, if the policies are consistent across the district. But it doesn't address my concern, which is that I don't think we should be denying participation in a graduation ceremony, especially high school graduation ceremony, which is the culmination of the student's entire academic career for, you know, something that occurred earlier. I would, I would like to offer a possible compromise, and that would be if the term of the suspension, or in the case of an expulsion, were to, was inclusive of the period in which the graduation ceremony takes place, then the student would not be eligible to participate. But if the student has already completed the term of his or her suspension or expulsion, then the student would be eligible to participate in the graduation ceremony.
Speaking as a principal, a secondary principal, I have to tell you whether it's eighth grade or twelfth grade, that last quarter is the most difficult. And it is tremendous leverage in keeping students focused and in line with a positive, that the ceremony is a privilege, not a right. And yes, they do get their diploma. I mean, we're all clear with that. They, you know, they're not deprived of the diploma. But the privilege of walking with their classmates, all of the junior high and high school principals felt that, you know, this was absolutely an aid to schools in keeping them safe and keeping behavior on a positive track.
I would also add that there's one other factor to consider. The graduation ceremony, the promotional ceremonies at the eighth grade do not just reflect an accomplish, an academic accomplishment. It reflects a standard of citizenship. When you're participating in that ceremony, we are recognizing that not only have you met the academic standards of this district required by the state, but that you've met a conduct of citizenship. I think for the principals, that's an important key element in their determination, do I get to participate or not?
In the Board Policy fifty-one twenty-seven, the last sentence talks about the means whereby he or she may appeal this decision, that I presume that the principal made. Who do they appeal to?
We, every single year, as we approach the June graduation, I and the principals will sit with either the associate superintendent or the superintendent and review these matters. It happens every single year.
Do they appeal to you, to the staff?
They, actually, I process them, and they're appealed to the associate superintendent and Dr. Sarvis.
This is how we spend the last two weeks of the school year, is with kids who may not graduate.
So I was wondering if, first of all, how many students would fall into this category? Of students who are, who have earned their diploma, will receive a diploma, will basically technically graduate from Santa Barbara, from, or not Santa Barbara, from a high school in our district, but will not be allowed to walk or participate in the ceremonies? How many, I would want to know how many students that typically affects? And also regarding the appeals, are the appeals that you hear all on the basis of discipline? Or is it some students who haven't committed, completed the unit, or haven't passed the KC, or other things as well?
Any number of reasons.
Okay. Because I'd also be interested in knowing how many of these appeals that are for this reason get upheld? I mean, how many do you actually, how many of these students actually prevail in their appeal?
We do not have the data that we can currently share with you about the past few years. We can, of course, provide you that. I will share with you my sense in reflecting on what's happened over the last five, six years, that the number of appeals that the superintendent or the associate superintendent grants is very minimal, very minimal. I would share with you probably less than five percent if I had to give you a number, a percentage. And maybe it's not even that high.
Now, that did not used to be the case, but at this point, over the last couple of years, very, very few appeals.
So we're talking about, we're talking, not talking about appeals that have been denied, but just appeals, period, have been very, very small. Okay.
Right. And the high schools, as have the junior highs, have undergone a really aggressive education program and constant reminders. You know, it's not something that just drops out of the sky. And I think this is why two of the high schools at the beginning of the second semester, even though that's not the start date, really aggressively work with those seniors and lay everything out and talk to them about the repercussions, the consequences, and push towards the making of good choices.
Thank you.
Well, I would really love to get the data, if we can, regarding the number of students who are, and also because our expulsions, I don't, as a board member, I don't see all the suspensions. But because our expulsions tend to disproportionately represent Latino students, I fear that Latino students are disproportionately represented in the number of students who are, who might be denied access. I don't know if that's true. That's why I'd like to see the data, based on the data for the high school students. I'm much more concerned about the high school students because that's their final, you know, step in our district. At the junior high level, I would be willing to, you know, to reconsider it, to discuss it. But I'd certainly like to see us, you know, really rethink the final graduation, because that's the one that really, I think, is the acad, has the academic bearing of the finality of their, their attendance in our district. So, at any rate, I would, if we could get that data, I would like to see it. I'd like to see if, in fact, it does have a disproportionate impact on one group of students or not.
Okay.
And I would just chime in that I would agree. I would like to see the data, although, and I would like to see consistency among the schools. But beyond that, I'm certainly willing to go with what the principals prefer.
Okay. Thank you very much. F two, request to speak to the Board of Education regarding update on alleged state and federal special education violations at Adams Elementary School. Dr. David Gilbertson. And I'm happy to say, Dr. Gilbertson, that we didn't keep you waiting this time. You're on almost another minute. You're supposed to be on. So, thank you in the past, and I'm glad we can help you tonight.
Thank you. I want to publicly acknowledge that. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again to the board, and I'll keep this brief and to the point. In November two thousand nine, I filed complaints against Adams School for violations of state and federal law. In December, the State Department of Education investigated those complaints and notified the superintendent of thirteen specific violations of state and federal law. On December fifteenth, I was notified by Mr. Gohardo that I was involuntarily being removed from Adams School and placed at Lacumbra. On January fourth, two thousand and ten, I started my assignment at Lacumbra. In, prior to the move to Lacumbra, Mr. Gohardo informed me that he would work with me, to use his words, in a transition of cases, because it was such an abrupt move. I presumed, you know, in a good faith way, that there would be opportunities to attend IEPs and other meetings that were needed, just to affect a smooth transition. In February, one of the families I had worked very closely with had requested that I attend an IEP for a child, her daughter. And I informed her that I needed to be invited to the IEP through the appropriate channels at Adams School. Several, I think two weeks went by, no one invited me to the meeting. The mother checked with me a couple of times, and I basically said to her, please ask the administration to invite me to the meeting. On February eleventh, she met with me and said, no one has invited you. And she put in writing a request to attend the IEP meeting. So, and the IEP was, I believe, was scheduled for February seventeenth, so there was ample time to respond. Basically, the seventeenth came, and at seven thirty in the morning, I received a call on my way to work, asking if I was going to go to the IEP meeting. And I informed the mother. I said, I have not received an invitation, at which point I went to Lacumbra, and I asked my site supervisor, Ms. Keynes, if I could attend the meeting. And I was informed that I could not attend the meeting. And basically was told that the children at Adams School were Vicky Larelli's, the psychologist, and that the kids at Lacumbra were mine. I said that was contrary to what Mr. Gohardo had told me, that he would work with me on transitions. And she felt stuck in the middle, I believe. She ended up talking to Mr. Gohardo, and was told, basically, that if I was sent to the IEP, that he would then review the need for psychological services at Lacumbra, and would apparently potentially cut services, because they must not be needed if I could go to IEPs at Adams. The short story on this is, I didn't go to the IEP. And this was a child who I had performed the assessment on, a child whose mother trusted my judgment, and who had explicitly asked that I be at the IEP. I don't know what you all are told, but that's totally inappropriate. It was clearly a violation of past practice in terms of being able to attend IEP meetings, since many psychologists have attended IEPs at schools other than the sites to which they're assigned. It's also very clear that the parent has legal authority to determine who has expertise in terms of their children, and it is another violation of law. And this is after, there have been multiple violations. So I really don't understand. And it's a, an example to me of mistreatment of parents, as well as staff. And I really hope you, I'll just share it as an example of what goes on out there, and hope that you'll take a look at what's, what's happening in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbertson.
Mr. Herron, I have a quick question for Dr. Gilbertson.
Mrs. Parker?
I have a quick question for you, Dr. Gilbertson. Since February seventeenth, have you been to any IEPs at Adams?
I've been to one IEP. The, I did, the thing I didn't tell you, I did file a grievance on this because I felt it was so egregious. And I got a single, single, I think it was a single line, after further consideration, we, I don't know who the we is, have reconsidered this, and you can attend IEP meetings at Adams School with permission from your supervisor. It should not have reached a level of a grievance. You know, it should have been something that just happened as a part of a good faith transition. It didn't happen like that. And I'm at a loss to explain why I was prohibited from going, why I had to file a grievance to get somebody to hear this. I've asked for an apology in writing from Mr. Gohardo to the parent and to me. I've also asked that there be written assurance that this doesn't happen again. I've been told, I was actually told by someone in, in the state level union, that that's like asking for a million dollars. I might as well ask for a million dollars as ask for a written apology. I don't know. I mean, you know, when, when things go wrong, the way to set it right to start with is to say you're sorry and just move on. I don't think it's too much to ask. I guess I'm not going to hold my breath that it actually happens.
Thank you.
We have one public comment.
Carolyn Renard?
First, I wanted to let you know that Jonah Spacido wanted to speak on this item, but she was unable to get here tonight. She'll be submitting her comments in writing. The retaliation against this man by the district for filing these and other complaints is beyond belief, as is this board's participation in it. I want to address the district's attempts to constructively fire him by this bogus layoff that they're attempting. The district is claiming that they're laying, laying him off because of FICMAT recommendation to lay off psychologists. And I, as I let the board know at the last regular meeting, I emailed FICMAT and asked them what exactly their recommendation was based on. And they have essentially refused to respond to me. I later, since then, I have faxed the director of FICMAT with CCs to Mary Hedler, the Director of Special Education at CDE. And the CDE member of the Board of FICMAT and said, complained about the lack of response. And I told them that this district is using this recommendation to get rid of and further retaliate against David Gilbertson, and that this is a serious matter. They needed to let, to respond, at least give me some acknowledgement that they were going to respond, and within four days to provide me with this information about what their recommendation is based on. Well, they haven't responded. To say the least, FICMAT is not backing up its own recommendation to get rid of psychologists, which, their recommendation was already highly suspect, even at the time. which their recommendation was already highly suspect even at the time to get rid of psychologists when this district couldn't fulfill its obligations to students already so badly. But under these circumstances, this board simply cannot allow this district administration to use this so-called FICMAT recommendation to further retaliate against David Gilbertson by first taking away his administrative position and now trying to completely get rid of him by quote, laying him off. In my opinion, it's not unreasonable to conclude, given FICMAT's refusal to respond, that their recommendations are essentially fraudulent. You cannot act on these ethically. This so-called layoff also is being apparently based on a statute that says David's years of being a special education administrator don't count towards his seniority. However, this statute only applies to teachers, not school psychologists.
Thirty seconds.
You're allowing Mr. Sarvis to continue to retaliate against David Gilbertson, who has put his job on the line by trying to protect these students who are being abused by this district, these disabled students. Sends a clear message to the rest of your personnel. Speak out for students and this is what will happen to you. I'd also like to mention that the lack of support for David and the inaction in response to this blatant retaliation by the teachers' union, the complete lack of help for him from this teachers' union is inexcusable.
Thank you, Ms. Renard. That concludes public comment.
Mr. Herron, I, I would like to note that the elimination of the administrative position was not a FICMAT recommendation. While Mr. Gilbert, or Dr. Gilbertson, excuse me, was given a layoff notice, it was an elimination of the position.
Mr. Sarvis, we can't hear you.
It was an elimination of the position and I believe we will still have a position here for Dr. Gilbertson.
Okay. Nine o'clock, we'll take a, it says 15 minutes, let's take a 10-minute break. Request to speak to the Board of Education, Special Education Advisory Council.
And I believe Kathy Abarka will do the presentation. Good.
Good evening, Board members. I've given you all copies of what I'm about to do and I also some additional things that I'm not going to talk about because I have five minutes. Thank you for allowing us this time to speak in front of you about what we've accomplished and been doing since we last spoke. We've been busy this month coordinating meetings, participating at schools, and attending stakeholder committee meetings. As I reported in March, the SEEK members had offered assistance to principals in planning, organizing, and facilitating disability awareness days. So, I personally received a call from David Ortiz and we drafted an outline, which Jennifer Griffin crafted and implemented all by herself that day as the rest of us were up at a CalTash conference. She did a remarkable job. And her daughter attends La Colina and does, her son came and he has disabilities and he goes to school in Hollister. So, they were both there for the whole day. Every physical education class was exposed to a talk about the history of disabilities, people-first language, the concept that disabilities will inevitably touch all of our lives. And she stressed the importance of being a member of the community and what they could do to help those less fortunate than themselves. They went to various stations that gave them an opportunity to experience disabilities firsthand. So, it was an important day and it was clear that the students were profoundly touched. One very wonderful thing happened and in your attachment, you'll find that very lovely thing that happened. On March 16th, Marcia Eichelberger, Sandy Chauvin, I led a presentation in Washington School. Although there were many activities going on outside, we were in a classroom where we exposed the children to radios full of static, fans blowing on them, being rubbed and tickled with feathers and burlap, all while they were trying to concentrate on a teacher reading a story. Teachers and students alike were so impressed and the children were able to ask all kinds of questions. And that was kindergarten all the way through sixth grade. After the presentations were over, a number of staff members approached us and asked, commented, and said, what a great job we had done and how they asked if we could return and do some more disability awareness. On April 7th, I and some others of the SEEK were asked by Marilyn Lauer to participate in the Peabody Disability Awareness Day. So, I joined Eric and Eileen Hansi and Lessey Sanderson in facilitating stations with different disabilities. So, the children would come in half a grade at a time. They would go sit down for a 10-minute little talk and then they would all move around the gym. And I think Mr. Herron was there and he saw the, how the day was going. My day was spent talking to small groups of children about autism, playground bullying, and how they could be good community members. We talked about the responsibilities of being a student, a family member, and a community member. Marilyn did a great job of organizing and keeping the kids on track. Currently, we're in the process of scheduling and facilitating a presentation on the importance of inclusion to the PTA of Cleveland Elementary. Since this site's the location of the autism class, we've had questions from many parents on what they do in this class and how they do it and what's going to, how it's going to affect general education. The presentation is also going to include a cameo appearance from Brent Elder, the teacher of the autism class in the Kellogg School in Galena, and who will bring videos to show about inclusion that's happening there and examples of what can happen in their school. The membership committee of the SEEK has been working hard on visiting schools and scheduling pizza dinners and morning coffees to meet with parents of the children in special education. It appears as if our first school visit will be Santa Barbara High, so we'll let you know when that happens. In honor of Administrative Assistance Month, the Special Education Advisory Council will be delivering various breakfast sundries and coffee to the administration and the special ed department. We want all those hardworking staff to know how much we appreciate their work. On April 28th, we'll attend the Tri-County's Regional Centered Staff Meeting to introduce the SEEK to the case managers. Seek will also encourage the caseworkers to give information to their clients about SEEK and becoming a member. The Special Ed Advisory Council is collaborating with all stakeholders in the Santa Barbara community. Our next community meeting is April 20th at 6:30 in the district conference room. Because we're so out in the community, the staff is now opening communication with the parents of the SEAC. And whenever we're given comments, I try to jot them down and I've enclosed them for you to look at, just some ideas from some of the staff. The Special Ed Advisory Council would like to thank those principals who took the time and believed in the collaboration of parents and educators to truly create some incredible memories for the children's in their schools. Therefore, this week, we give kudos to those principals, Kate Ford, David Ortiz, and Damian Vernet, for their forward thinking and for respecting the knowledge that parents brought to their disability awareness days. We would like to encourage them to think outside the box and find ways for their students to actively participate with their students with disabilities in the schools. We'd also like to thank Marilyn Lauer for her continued collaboration with the parents, both in her school and outside of her school. Wouldn't be a night if we didn't have a thought for the month. Do not go where the path may lead. Go instead where there is no path and leave a trail. Ralph Waldo Emerson. Thank you all. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Abarka.
Questions?
Can you mention your Autism Society karaoke night?
Karaoke night? It is April, it is April 22nd at Old Town Tavern in Galena, California. And the tavern is generously donating 20% of its proceeds that night to the Autism Society directly. The DJ karaoke is donating all his time. You are all welcome to attend with your spouses. We will be singing. We will have a roulette wheel of karaoke. We will, we will be able to buy a dollar to buy, have somebody sing a song for you. We would love for you all to attend. It's going to be a great and fun night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of SEAC?
No.
Thank, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
We have a public comment on this item.
It's really too bad that it took a lawsuit to have this district start the disability, these disability awareness days. It actually took more than a lawsuit. Five years after the district was court ordered to have these disability awareness days after what happened to those girls in, in wheelchairs that couldn't even go to the bathroom at Santa Barbara High, the district still hadn't been doing the disability awareness days. And Jonah Esposito had to file a complaint with the board and tell you, and finally, you started doing it. Thank you for at least five years late, well, actually more like 20 years late doing it.
Thank you, Ms. Renard.
Okay. F4, update on status of special education.
I'm going to turn this over to Robin Sowasky.
Hey, thank you. I am going to be, I'm going to begin by turning this over to Dr. Carrie Mills. As you heard, I believe it was last week, she will be our Executive Director for Special Ed beginning July 1st. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about the transition plan at that point, but we're going to hear from Carrie first.
Good.
Good evening, Dr. Sarvis, Ms. Sowasky, Mr. Smith, President Herron, and members of the board. I wanted to thank you for promoting me to Executive Director. I didn't have a chance to thank you last time, so thank you for that. Since I joined the district last October as the elementary director, I have really enjoyed getting to know the staff, the students, the parents, who have been really supportive, and the principals. And I look forward to enhancing that role in the secondary district and getting to know all of the staff, parents, principals, et cetera, in the secondary district as well. The special ed team of administrators and program specialists has been working really hard to implement positive change. We have made gains, but there is a lot of work left to do. I look forward to leading the department and overcoming some of the challenges that we are facing. I'd like to share with you some of the priorities that I'd like to work on during my time as Executive Director. First, I'd like to continue to work with the stakeholders and staff and parents to implement the FICMAT action plan. I'd like to work cooperatively and positively with staff and parents to enhance communication, to build trust, and to improve staff morale. I will have a high focus on the instructional program, including program development and building a full continuum of program options in the district. I'd like to continue to sponsor professional development opportunities, provide staff with the training that they need to implement effective instructional strategies. Like to work with staff to develop a greater understanding of the legal requirements and implications in special education. And I would also like to develop an alternate dispute resolution process in the hope that this will bring about more positive relationships and a decrease in due process filings. And I'd also like to establish a district advisory group and increase its positive role and provide parent education opportunities in the district. Again, thank you for this opportunity and I really appreciate your confidence in me.
Okay. And I'm going to ask Dr. Mills to stay up there and I'm going to give my brief update as well about the transition and anything new that's happening just immediately because you may have questions for Dr. Mills. We've been meeting, Dr. Sarvis and I've been meeting, Carrie Mills and I've been meeting, and we've been meeting with the team, Michelle Britton-Bass and Tom Guajardo, and, and talking about how we're going to move from our current Executive Director, Tom Guajardo, who is in that position until June 30th, and have a move with Dr. Mills moving into that. And she has her full-time Director of Elementary Special Ed, also all the responsibilities to fulfill. How do you do that? The, both of their plates are very full and be moving to transition. So, we, we looked at what seemed to be the most important things to act as transition points. They will both remain in those positions. So, and I'm going to read this to make sure we get it all correct as we finalize it this afternoon. And we'd like to share it with you and of course, this is up for, you know, revision. Along with her focus areas that Carrie just described to you, and she would be carrying forward with those as Execu-, as, as Executive Director, Carrie and Tom will begin to share responsibilities for board presentations as you see this evening. FICMAT work group facilitation and implementation, and of course, budget planning for 2010 and 11 because that's a really important piece going forward. Carrie, Dr. Mills, and Michelle Britton-Bass will together, and they've already started this, attend the Selpa meetings. So, get that county perspective, which includes a lot of budget issues, as you know, the Selpa budget, and coordinate staffing assignments for next year. Carrie will take the lead in the staffing, but of course, with Michelle. And, and Tom will be playing into this too. In fact, we have a whole transition, we're going to call it a transition binder, that along with carrying out his responsibilities, he's going to provide for Carrie and possibly it'll help Michelle as well, that has current staffing, a summary of the legal cases, a summary of any personnel concerns or issues, all of the things that you'd want to have when you take over, just to make sure it's all in writing, everything's there in place, and we're ready to go. Dr. Mills will begin in May, leading, and she's already started this actually this month, leading the special ed staff and department chair meetings. And those include such groups as the chairs for each site, the psychologists, the speech therapists, the nurses. So, some of this has started and it will continue and then she'll, they, they may co-facilitate one or lead one group next week and then she will be doing that in May. At the next stakeholders meeting, which is Monday, the 19th, 3:30 to 5:30 in here, Dr. Mills, Tom Guajardo, and I will actually be all co-facilitating that meeting together. And then if we have another one, if we can find a date that works for the end of the school year, Dr. Mills will then lead that one. So, we're trying to make it a smooth transition without overloading everyone. As you can imagine, after it was announced that Dr. Mills was going to be Executive Director in July, it felt, I think to her, like it happened immediately because all of a sudden, the phone and the emails and everything else started happening. And then of course, everybody wants to know, you know, what, what's going to happen here, what's going to happen there. And so, hopefully tonight with giving her overview of the focus areas, you've gotten a, you know, an idea of where we believe that, and she very, she created all of this and then of course, talked to Dr. Sarvis and I about what are the most important parts for our district? How do we go forward to just keep improving and continue to address the issues in the FICMAT report as well as those things that we agree are, are big, you know, issues that need to be addressed on an ongoing, on an ongoing basis? I mean, communication of course being the number one. So, I think I'm going to ask if you have questions of Dr. Mills or of me.
We have two public comments, so let's hear the public comments.
Carolyn Renard, followed by Lourdes Arribey.
Well, I, I'm a little confused. I thought this was supposed to be an update on the status of special education, but after the comments of these two women, we still haven't heard with anything about the actual status, the present status of special education. We've heard about plans and hopes and that there was a, there was going to be someone else in the leadership position. We haven't heard anything about the status. I'm surprised this board didn't ask, ask for the information about what's, what is the status right now? I don't understand why you've allowed this just to happen. I know that the status is, is probably worse than it was before the FICMAT report. Not that the FICMAT report really addressed, the FICMAT report didn't address the compliance issues, of course, as you all knew when you chose FICMAT to do the investigation in the first place, that that's not what they dealt with. So, that's been ignored. Then I know that Jonah Esposito has people, has parents coming into her office almost every day with horrendous complaints about the violations to their, their disabled children that are still going on in this district, especially with the low-income families. It's worse than it, it's almost as though the, after the FICMAT report, this administration thinks that they can just get away with anything now. Mr. Sarvis was never held responsible for anything after the FICMAT report, even though the FICMAT report really didn't even deal with the compliance issues, the lack of compliance, I should say. And now, you know, this FICMAT committee is just such a joke. And you're, you people are not going to end up having to deal with anything. Mr. Sarvis is not going to be held responsible. Obviously, nothing has changed if it's gotten worse, if anything. Now, it's really depressing. If you care about children, it's really depressing to see this all happening.
Thank you, Ms. Renard.
Is my time counting right now? Because I can't speak.
Yes.
Okay.
I can only speak for my children, because I don't have an agency, and I can only speak to what happened to my sons. I have two kids that are over 18, and I have a son, my successful story, that's been going downhill emotionally because of what happened, you know, what's happening in a school. I had asked Mr. Guajardo to start the process of getting him to private school, because I don't think the Special Education Department will be able or willing to come up with a program that is going to successfully address, to be able to provide him with an education. He was discriminated. I think Dr. Sarvas, discrimination happened. What happens is that he tried out for volleyball, and, you know, when the coaches have to choose between white and my son, make Hispanic brown skin like me, it was easier for, it is easier, you know, for the public, the schools, you know, to discriminate against Latino and brown people. We are less likely to say something. You know, we usually get depressed and cry and try to get over, you know, the feelings. My son is going downhill. He had perfect attendance, and then he lost his desire to go to school. He will stay up thinking. I thought that I was the only one that I was sleeping at night, but my son was not sleeping. He wasn't able to. It is very hard for a little kid to learn that there is discrimination, especially from people that he trusts, like his teachers and coaches and people. He is given a citation. Can you believe that my son is going to have to, I'm going to have to go with him in front of a judge, in case Mr. Newhouse at Dos Pueblos is not able to successfully speak my son's case at Dos Pueblos? Mr. Newhouse is trying to help me. He's been trying to help me for 15 years, first a lack of brand, then a D.P. And I can't believe I am going to have to go in front of a judge and explain. I don't know if they ever believed me. According to Kate Smith, you know, it is everywhere, you know, it's called institutionalized, maybe he can help me to say, pronounce, discrimination. It's instituted, you know, we're discriminated against, and my son-
Thirty seconds.
-is emotionally affected, and I would like to get help. I would like to be able to somebody care and concern. I don't care who this person is, and I would like very much to be able to stay for three years at Dos Pueblos and get people together and, you know, the day will come when I'm going to be in this room, I don't know when, with a lot of my people. And I don't know what a class action lawsuit is, but it's going to come, and it's going to come from our people. It's not a threat, it's just something that needs to happen. We would like to see good faith and help. By the way, Mr., Dr. Sarvas, my husband called you, and we were promised that we were going to get a reply, your secretary said. I think we deserve to know if you will be willing to talk to us, if you don't think that you have a time. I mean, it'd be nice to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Uribe.
Mr. Heron, Board will get the specifics from Mrs. Uribe. We take charges of racism seriously, and we need to investigate that.
Dr. Sarvas or his staff will be in contact with you. Anything further on status of special education? It's nice to hear where we're going. That is an update on the status, so I appreciate it. F5, Report on Santa Barbara School Districts and Santa Barbara Teachers Association Contract Provision for Partial Support of SBTA Presidents' Salary and Benefits.
A number of meetings ago, we heard a concern that it may be inappropriate for the school district to support a portion of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association president's salary and benefits. I immediately asked for advice from legal counsel, and I'd like to introduce Craig Price, Legal Counsel, to actually give his opinion directly to the Board, rather than have me describe it for him. I do know, by the way, that there are districts all over California where there is partial support for a union president, and I know that for the public, that doesn't, on its face, make much sense, but when you hear the ed code provisions and requirements on part of the, part of the school board, I think it will make a lot of sense.
I want to thank you for your very concise legal opinion. It's very complete.
Thank you very much. I know you have all had an opportunity to look at it, so I'm just going to give a real nutshell, as I think Dr. Sarvas is wanting me to do. Under the government code, there is a specific provision that requires that a reasonable amount of compensation, paid compensation, be given to a union representative for the time that is spent on meeting and negotiating and processing grievances. This was something that the legislature put in the collective bargaining law. So those most fundamental activities, engagement between the school district employer and the union, is to result in the union representative, who is directly involved in those, being paid by the district for that time. There's completely separate provisions that have to do with leaves of absence, and union officials who are engaged in doing other types of union business, going to meetings, preparing for meeting and negotiating, and on and on and on, because it can be very, very busy, obviously, are entitled to any amount of leave that the union seeks, but the union is responsible for paying for that portion of the time. So it's quite clear, under the Leave section, that the paid compensation for meeting and negotiating under the government code is additional to the union-paid leave of absence time that is in the educational code. And I think that triggered my determination that the two need to be read together, as opposed to resulting in a conflicting interpretation. And so we've concluded that a union official may be on a partial leave of absence, meaning for a certain percentage of time, which is required to be granted under the Education Code, union-paid, and may also be entitled to have district-paid compensation for the amount of time that he spends meeting and negotiating, as that term is defined in the law, and processing grievances. The situation came up in another district to the south of us involving very similar facts. Well, what if there is no actual teaching assignment? For the reasons that I've laid out in the opinion, I don't think that the best analysis of that should result in triggering an all or nothing. That is, you have a perfectly allowable situation where you have someone that's on a partial leave of absence to do certain types of union business on district-paid release compensation time to do meeting and negotiating, and whether or not the whole thing crumbles is dependent on whether there's an actual teaching assignment. Whether the person has an actual teaching assignment, which does not factor into the leave of absence or paid release time, frequently can be something that would be at the district's option, because you want to provide for a suitable classroom environment and not have somebody, for example, that has an 85% leave of absence to do union business, have to be teaching in a classroom for 15%, which would trigger all sorts of problems. So on balance, the conclusion that I've reached, in the absence, really, of any clear legal authorities, is that the contract that the district currently has is legal, but that there are some minor technicalities that I've pointed out that I think need to be straightened out with the union. And I will say, as I think you know, that other law firms, one in particular, have reached an opposite conclusion. And we started off the analysis by looking very carefully at what they looked at, and, you know, you know the saying about, "Ask a different lawyer." Well, this is one of those instances, but we feel quite comfortable that, under the present state of the law, that we should support upholding the clear intent in the educational rights collective bargaining law that allows for compensated time for meeting and negotiating and grievances. And so we took a position that supports that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Any question for Mr. Price? Doesn't look like we have any questions. As I said, it was very concise and complete, so we appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
F6, First Reading of Revisions to Administrative Regulation 3541, Transportation Routes and Services.
Eric Smith will make this presentation.
As you probably recall, when we made the decision to discontinue parent-paid transportation, Board Member Parker called our attention, there was a drafting error in the existing board policy. We don't actually have walking distance radiance for elementary students, so that's been corrected through essentially striking out those references, and so we're presenting this for first reading.
Any questions? No? Okay. F7, First Reading of Revisions to Board Policy 3540, Travel Expense and Administrative Regulation 3540, Travel Expense.
We're withdrawing this item. The complete board policy in AR did not get printed as the attachments, so we'll bring it back to our next meeting.
Thank you. Okay. F8, First Reading of Board Policies and Administrative Regulations of the 5000 Series.
We've waited a long time for this, and we're glad we have plenty of time to address it tonight.
In the cover document, there's a complete list of all of the board policies and ARs, of the ones that have been replaced, and then there's an analysis of the ones that have been replaced, but there's also intermixed some new policies where there is no actual explanation of. So I'd like to ask the Board, how do you want me to go through these 54 pages? You want to, do each of you want to spell out what you have questions on, or you want to just go 1 to 10, 10 to 20, and go through the pages?
Go through the pages.
And let me just explain that many of these are updates from CSBA. We've simply gone through and struck out the old policies that pertain, and we have all the new policies in place. Barbara Chiany is here, who can also ask, answer questions about these.
Well, we have the first, we have 53 pages, so how about pages 1 through 10?
Are you talking about the new sections?
The new, yeah, the big, the big numbers, 1 through 10. Those are the ones, these are now the ones we're being asked, or 1 through, let go 1 through 11. Mrs. Parker?
All right, well, I'll start with page 1.
Okay.
Just the line, "This is Board Policy 5021 on non-custodial parents." And just questioning, "The parent guardian who enrolls a child in a district school shall be presumed to be the child's custodial parent guardian and shall be held responsible for the child's welfare." And I just wanted to be sure that we tied it in with the enrollment board policy, which I didn't have in front of me, and I didn't have a chance to look at, because that has requirements about the percentage of time that a student lives with in a district for them to even enroll in our schools. And so I just wanted to raise that as a question mark, because I'm going to go back and look at the enrollment policy and be sure that it ties in, but I do, I do question that one. And then, I don't know if anybody else has anything before?
How about 1 through 11? Anybody?
You do?
Mrs.
Page 5, sorry. My question was just, under exemptions from attendance, homeschooling isn't identified as one of the items where a student might be exempted, and maybe they're already considered full-time attendees if they're home, how does that work?
Homeschool is considered regular, a regular education. I mean, it's not a regular, it's an alternative, but it's-
So it's not required to be exempted?
Right.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Ms. Cudell?
I just had a, I guess I just wasn't clear. The number four, also on page 5, "The student holds a work permit and attends part-time Does that mean, I mean, I guess the question I have is, does the student have to be employed or just have a work permit? So if a student has a work permit and isn't employed, they could still attend part-time classes?
I can just say that, looking from the work permits, a work permit has to have the employer's name on it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, so it's not a blanket, like license or something?
To work, right.
Okay, okay, then that makes sense to me.
Anything else, 1 through 11?
I just want to comment on page 9, which is the AR 5113.2 on work permits. If I had realized, I thought you had to be 14 to work. If I had realized I could have been sending my 12-year-old off in the summers, he wanted to work, and I could say, "No, you have to be 14." Oh, well.
Okay, you learned something.
I learned something.
Okay, how about pages 12 through 28?
I have one on page 12.
Okay.
Which is students, it's the middle of the grades evaluations of student achievement. On the board policy, it says, "Students in grades K through 3 shall receive progress reports rather than letter grades," but it's really K through 6, and that's reflected in the AR.
I'm sorry, which one, where is that?
Sorry, right in the middle of the page, right below challenging student records. It says, "Students in grades K-3," but that should be K-6.
We got it on the AR, correct?
Right. On page 12-
Center of the page.
Oh, I see, okay, sorry. Okay.
I just had-
Go ahead, Ms. Cudell.
I just had a question. I'm not sure where it would fit in here, but do you recall that we have the, we had the, the discussion about students who are in the IB program can have their grade changed if they score a certain level on the test?
Well, it was, it was being able to have students, like their test after, after the fact-
Right.
-come back and change the grade.
Where would that, my question, I guess, was where would that fit in this policy?
Oh, in this part.
Or this policy? Because this is giving the explanation of how the students receive their grades, and it doesn't make any reference to the allowance to change the grade once the course has been completed.
Well, we can go looking for it, and we can provide that information for you.
I know it's in the AP.
But that, if, first of all, you probably remember, I wasn't in favor of that policy, but, but since we have it, it seems like it should be, at least be, not necessarily included, but referenced, maybe.
Reference, too.
Yeah, and it is in the AP, yeah.
Do teachers not have the right to go back in and change grades later if, say, an error is found in their calculations? So would that not be-
Definitely, teachers do.
That would be the same.
However, we do not.
No, I know that.
Teachers do.
Teachers do, yeah. But teachers are the ones that are changing it after the AP tests, right?
Well, you'll get into that, okay.
I think it is, I think it's initiated by the teacher.
Any else between 12 and 28?
I'm on page 14.
14, okay.
Yeah, I've got one on page 15, but you go ahead. Okay. I just, I really had a question about the incomplete down at the bottom of this page, and I guess I'm kind of thinking, because I know how City College, how we handle incompletes, where there's a contract that's drawn up between the teacher and the student that specifies what work needs to be completed and accomplished, and I'm wondering if, if we have anything like that, because it seems like sometimes there could be a possibility of a misunderstanding between teachers and students or parents about what work needs to be completed in order for that grade to go from, you know?
Well, we don't have a formal contract, but I haven't, in my time in the district, I have not run in- I have not run into that as a problem.
Okay.
My guess is that it is clear what the student needs to do to, to finish the class.
Question on that one. I'm glad you raised that, because I had the question regarding, if the work, if not made up within six weeks, the incomplete shall become an F. Now, I don't, I'm not positive in our system if, if there are other possibilities, but I know, for example, at City College, a student might take an incomplete because they haven't completed maybe one assignment, et cetera. So if they complete it, they'll get an A. If they don't complete it, they maybe would get a C. So we have the discretion to say the incomplete will become a C, or the incomplete would become a B, depending on what the student would earn if they had gotten a zero on that assignment. Is this always a case where if the students don't complete an incomplete, they will get an F?
I'm thinking that this kind of incomplete isn't like just one assignment. It's, it's really quite a bit. I mean, enough so that it's not even worth giving a grade of C, D, or...
So if a student just didn't want to receive a lower grade because they had missed a particular assignment, they couldn't, they wouldn't have the option of getting an incomplete? They would just have to get the lower grade? Is that correct?
You know, in the way it's played out, I, I don't know, Michael, do you have any other detail on that? I'm, I don't know well enough to report here, I'd have to ask.
I will share with you that the staff president did not review this particular policy, so we'd have to take it back to the director that did.
Yeah, that is a good point, because you could have a student who's doing really well and then is in a car accident the last week of school, or misses the final exam or something, then is their grade, you know? Is it automatically an F? Okay, thank you.
Anything else through page twenty-eight?
For me, on page fifteen.
Fifteen.
Just down at the part about peer grading, and this is one that I inserted the last time this one came around with us, too, where it says, "At their discretion," if we could insert the line, "and with sensitivity, teachers may use peer grading of student test papers and assignments as appropriate to reinforce lessons." Yeah, just because I know that we have some students that find it very, very distressing, and it's, in some cases, in certain classes, it wouldn't be appropriate.
I just have one, kind of just bureaucratic suggestion, but on the same page where it says grades for college courses, it might make more sense to move that up so it follows the grades for achievement piece and comes before grades for physical education, because we talk about weighted grades and all that for college courses, and then, then we jump to PE, then we come back to college courses. So just inserting those four lines above grades for physical education might make more sense organizationally.
Okay. Up to page twenty-eight. Twenty-eight, up to twen, up to twenty-eight. Okay. Twenty-nine to forty.
Okay, you go first.
Mrs. Deacon?
On page thirty, I was just curious about the By Literacy Award, which I think sounds like a really nice idea, but I'm trying to envision how this works. It says, "The superintendent or designated shall approve applications for the award." So are those awards student-initiated?
You know what? This is a mistake. This was eliminated on the one that we gave to our secretaries to retype, because we don't give that, as far as I know. Mr. Gonzalez, is that correct? Right, we had it, we had it eliminated, and somehow it got passed through. So I apologize.
Okay, because I...
I didn't catch it.
It was the first time I'd seen it, and I thought, oh, By Literacy Award, okay, all right.
Okay, up to page forty.
I have on page thirty-three, the board policy fifty-one thirty-one point five on vandalism and graffiti. And I don't have wording to suggest on this, I'd like to do some research, but I really think that we need a paragraph on graffiti education, anti-graffiti education, rather than simply, you know, discipline and reporting. Because there's, there is free anti-graffiti lesson plans, there are videos, and I think our students, given what's going on in our community, they really need that, and I'd like to see that in our board policy.
Will you research and...
I will research and report.
Okay. Up to page thirty-nine? No? Okay, how about from page forty to the end? Mrs. Deacon?
I need a minute. There's, there's one paragraph that's missing a few lines. It's just, it got cut and pasted probably, but, but I have to find it, so, sorry, hold on.
Okay, Mrs. Parker, anything at the end?
I, I don't have anything else. I didn't find the missing piece.
I had a question, and it's kind of in, in line with what Ms. Parker just added regarding the anti-graffiti education, but it's on the sexual harassment. I was...
Forty-four.
It's forty-four, forty-five through forty-seven, and I'm not sure where we would put it, kind of, but I would like to add something like that, as, when I was looking through here, you know, rightfully so, this focuses on the person who was the target of the harassment. But I was wondering if we could add something in about, you know, I guess anti-harassment education, but really, you know, maybe...
Maybe on page forty-six, where it's talking about enforcement of the district policy. It says, "Providing training to students, staff, how to recognize it and how to respond."
And how to avoid it in the first place would be nice.
And how to avoid it in the first place, maybe.
Yeah, prevention is kind of what I'm, you know, what I'd like to focus on. But also creating, I, I, it's, I mean, it's part of prevention, but it's also creating an awareness among the students of what's, what it is. Because, you know, as we saw in a case that we, you know, with student discipline, sometimes students don't have a sense of what constitutes inappropriate sexual behavior or sexually related behavior.
Anything further on...
I got ahead of myself. Mine was in the six thousand, so I'll wait till I get there.
Oh, okay. We can go to the six thousand series? And we'll do it the same way. We have a few more pages. We go one through, one through fourteen?
I always like to start with page one.
Page one.
Second paragraph, "In July nineteen ninety-nine, the board adopted the State of California Content Standards in Language Arts, Mathematics, Social Studies, and Science for all students, all programs, all grade levels, and all schools. Therefore, the San Barbara School District's content standards are identical to the California Content Standards." But now, the State of California has content standards in many other areas besides Language Arts, Mathematics, Social Studies, and Science. And I don't know that this board ever adopted those content standards for the other areas. If we didn't, probably we need to, but if we did, shouldn't we include all the other areas?
I need to check to why did CSBA not include that? Good question.
So that's my question mark. That's something you don't need to answer right now, but if we could look that up and...
Oh, I see why we've, we've added our paragraph, and instead, CSBA has a separate thing, so I think we do need to, we'll need to look at that.
Okay.
One through, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Page four?
Well, it's really, I guess, page five, but it continues from page four. And this is talking about the celebrations and observances. And it, on the top of page five, it includes, this is Susan B. Anthony Day. Do our schools observe Susan B. Anthony Day? I raised this question because I was actually in high school when this became a, a holiday, and I used to make a point of reminding my instructors that there was such a thing as Susan B. Anthony Day. But none of my, none of my students now have ever heard of it, so I'm assuming we don't, we're not acknowledging it in schools.
I have a feeling you're right. I don't hear about it, although this is an ed code, meaning that we shall hold exercises to, and we do get reminders and links and all kinds of things, particularly for some of the newer ones, the on or near September seventeenth, U.S. Constitution and Citizenship Day. We get a lot around Dr. King.
The other one I wondered about was Conservation Bird and Arbor Day.
Ooh, Arbor Day, yes, but Conservation Bird?
And it's all March seventh, and they're not all on March seventh, surely. I mean, I think that's something to look into.
We will take a look at it, in that these are ed code items. Thank you for the heads up and reminder.
And here is my question on page five, and that was under patriotic exercises. The language is changed with this new board AR. And now it says, "Each school shall conduct patriotic exercises daily." That was there before. "These patriotic exercises shall consist of the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance." And it's reflecting ed code, and so I think we need to look at that, but I don't think any of our secondary schools have a daily recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. They may do other patriotic, patriotic activities, but they're not. And I, and I, I would really not want to say suddenly to our high schools that you have to. I think that that would be very disruptive to whatever they do do. And yet, if it's ed code, then what can we do? So I would, I would like some guidance on that one.
Up to page twelve or thirteen? Okay. Mrs. Deacon?
Oh, I was just going to say, because I was actually focusing on, on page thirty-five, at the guest speaker's piece, but I would like to thank you all for putting, for matching these up, the guest speaker in schools piece with the controversial issue piece, because we, we were missing that, and I'm glad it's in there.
Okay. Fourteen to twenty-six?
I just wanted to make a note on, not to change anything on page twenty-one, but the high school graduation requirements, BP sixty-one forty-six point one. At some point, I think we need to do a really in-depth study about our high school graduation requirements. Not tonight, but...
And the number, number of units.
Number of units, what we're requiring, the whole thing.
Good. We'd like to do that.
Okay. Anyone else? We go twenty-seven to thirty-nine? We haven't found yours yet, Mrs. Deacon? Okay.
It's on page eighty, so I was...
Oh, we'll, we'll get there, okay. Nothing up to page thirty-nine? Then let's go to forty to fifty-two. Okay, fifty-three through sixty-nine? Okay. We'll go seventy to the eighty-five.
Okay, now's my big moment, my big moment. After reading all the way through here, I want to get credit for finding this. On page eighty, at the, like, it's about the fourth paragraph down where it says, "When an alternative class group is established within a school, the superintendent or designated shall..." And, and then it's, if you go back to the original, the older version, it just says, "Ensure that students currently enrolled in the district will not be displaced." So it's just, that's all.
That was a trick question there. They did that on purpose to see if we read that far, okay? Any other comments on eighty, three eighty-five? Okay. You have a few things to research and come back with, but compared to the number of pages, I don't think you have very much. Okay, let's go to, gee, we don't have any consent items to go back to. Coming events, Dr. Sarvis, you've talked about most of them, but...
Well, we do have a joint city council board meeting coming up on the, what is it, the twenty-third? And that's one-thirty on Friday.
And who is putting together the agenda for that? Is it a combination?
Yes, I've been meeting with Jim Armstrong, and I'll be sending you a draft shortly.
Okay.
Maybe tonight.
Future agenda items? I know Dr., I know Dr. Noel sent you one that he would like on a future agenda, something about policies and procedures and hiring practice for senior executives. Did you get that email?
Oh, yes, I did. I did get that one.
Okay.
And we have a scheduled board meeting for action on the Adelante Charter on Friday, April thirty, and again, we'd like that one to be one-thirty as well. And we'd like it to be one-thirty so that if they do need to get things in the mail to the California Department of Education for the State Board of Education meeting, they can do that Friday afternoon.
Okay, and as I understand, the last meeting, that was on hold in case we needed it.
That's right.
That we very well, I mean, we, we can, if we desire, take action on the, the normal meeting. So it's a, it's going to be scheduled if we need it.
And weren't they also going to check to see if, what their timeline was going to be? Get back to us regarding whether, so, okay.
Yes, and, gosh, it was so long ago now, it was a week ago, it was rather inconclusive, as I recall, Mr. Herron.
I saw an email that there were certain things that had to be done by April thirtieth. There's a loan, they were applying for some type of loan, just in case they needed it.
Yes.
And...
But I remember...
And they need to have it in the FedEx by the, by the thirtieth in order to get on the agenda for May third or May fourth, something like that, so...
But I do remember the California Department of Education representative saying that there's not much difference between the... there's not much difference between the May meeting and the July meeting for getting a CDS code.
For getting a CDS code or for getting a CNS number? Charter school number, CSN number?
Well...
CSN.
School number.
But do they need the number in order to apply for, for their grants, is, I think, was their concern?
That was the main, main concern was...
That was their, that was their concern.
And the other main concern is that you've got students and parents and faculty who's also very, very concerned. 10:12, we're going to call this an adjournment.